Come to order, please. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 27th Board Meeting. Just had an executive session that will be discussed at the next Board Meeting in South Walton. We will rise, ask Larry Jones to do the invocation and the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we're grateful for today and for this time you've given us to be here in your house. And God, we thank you for each one that's gathered. Lord, we thank you for the work this before us. We thank you for the decisions that this board will be making. God, we pray that they'll do it with due diligence. God, we pray for strength, wisdom, and guidance to do the things that would be pleasing to you and pleasing to the citizens of Walton County. We ask you to join with us now and as your word says, let all things done decently and in order. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's see, we got any visiting representatives or anything like that? No, I don't see any. Okay. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good morning. Under additions and deletions, you have deletion for number forty, item number forty-one, which was a citizen request from Denise Mack. We would like to remove item number twelve from the consent agenda regarding the Government Services Group and contract with Doggett Canal to discuss with legal and to bring you back a recommendation at a later date. And then we would like to add, under admin discussion and possible direction from the Board regarding the four-H requests for assistance on some property they have leased. And those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda with additions and deletions?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, this time, let me go ahead and make this announcement if I forgot to do it a minute ago. But if you have any electronic devices, please silence them at this time. If you have to carry on a conversation with anyone, please take it out into the hallway so it doesn't disrupt the other folks that are in the room. It's at this point in time, is there anyone that wishes to make a public comment at this time about any agenda item? Keeping in mind, as we go through the agenda, if the topic comes up, you still have the opportunity to make a public comment. Is there anybody at this time wish to speak in reference to any agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there any items to be removed by the Board other than what's already been discussed? Seeing none? Oh, where's Bobby at? He hiding behind a post?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there he is. Our Supervisor of Election, Bobby Beasley, welcome. All right. Need the approval on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I think the next item up is the EAL for Waste Management. And I'll go ahead and make my announcement, and I'm not sure how this is gonna work, Ms. Heather. We have three of us here have a conflict of interest. I filed the form with the clerk, and there's only two here. I guess one can make the motion, the other one's second, and then they can vote it. Otherwise, we're gonna have to wait.
My suggestion would be to... I would suggest that you just remove this item and put it on the consent agenda for the March thirteenth meeting.
Okay, I'm not sure how much grief that's gonna cause Waste Management. Won't there's a couple hundred thousand dollars due to them, have to wait another three weeks?
Caleb, this means it wouldn't cause any grief.
Caleb out there?
Yes, sir.
And I think he acknowledged it won't cause any grief.
It won't cause no problem, Caleb? Not that you can't work around, I understand you got a reserve. All right, well, then let's just table it, if that's okay. Do we need a motion to table?
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Table it to the next meeting. All right, I think, Mr. Jones, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The first item for your consideration today is regarding the former First National Bank Building. If you recall, at the last meeting, you directed staff to negotiate with the proposed purchaser of that building for some mechanism whereby we could continue to use it until we could obtain or construct a facility to move our records out of it. In your packet, you will find a executed offer sheet from Reynolds Henderson, who is the proposed buyer. The terms and conditions of that offer says that he will pay us a twenty thousand dollar earnest money deposit upon signing of a contract, that he will have a forty-five day due diligence period and right to inspect the property, and that the EMD will be fully refundable during that period if he finds such items that would cause him not to wish to purchase the property. After the due diligence, it is non-refundable. Closing will occur one year from the execution of the contract or before March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The seller will allow the buyer to paint the exterior of the building or make other reasonable exterior enhancements approved by both parties and the City of Dufuseniac Springs during the contract period. The buyer will pay the balance of the contract amount, which would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in cash at closing. That's, the one sixty is the balance, not the contract amount. And the buyer and seller will each pay the standard closing cost. So in essence, the contract would be to sell the building to Mr. Henderson for the one hundred and eighty thousand that he proposed in his bid, that he would put up a twenty thousand dollar earnest money deposit, and that we would close in twelve months, so that would give us a year to move forward with another facility. We think that accomplishes what we were looking to do.
Okay, I want to thank Mr. Henderson for working with us on that. As you recall, Commissioners, we did go out for construction on a building to accommodate these records, and we got no response, so we got to move forward again concerning that. So in interim, we got about a year from today to try and accommodate that, so Mr. Henderson had access to the building totally, and then we would have a new structure for the records keeping. Is any questions? Any comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, what's the Board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item for your consideration is an updating request for your approval of design fees and revisions to the department areas and the alternate spaces at the Freeport Office Complex and the South Walton Annex. Earlier, we brought to you a not to exceed price for the design phase of this project. We were asking you today to revise that number based on some further comments and discussions with the departments that are looking to locate in, primarily in the Freeport Office Park. If you'll flip over to about the third page, you'll see a document dated February the twentieth, two thousand eighteen. And in that list, you'll see items one through four, which are the latest, and we will consider them the final square footage numbers that have been allocated to each of those four departments. As you seen, we have received confirmation from each of them that they are happy and satisfied with those numbers. What you'll see there is from the numbers that were presented to you at the previous meeting for the not to exceed. The Planning Department has reduced their square footage by four hundred and eighty-eight square feet. The Tax Collector has increased theirs by five hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Sheriff's Office has increased by one hundred and ninety square feet, and the Building Department has increased by three hundred and fifty-one square feet. So the impact on the contract and budget for those four items from a design cost is eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, and from a construction cost, forty-five thousand one hundred and forty dollars. We would request your approval to move forward on those four items at the new square footage and to amend the agreement to reflect the changes in the design and construction costs as we move forward. Separate and apart from that, our two alternatives we would ask you to consider. Alternative one is to add a seventeen hundred and twenty-nine square feet training, meeting, multipurpose room in the Freeport Plaza. Once we get the Planning Department moved there, those boards that meet, and we're talking Planning Commission, Code Enforcement, Design Review Board, they rely heavily on documentation from planning. So all those documents are gonna be in Freeport. So we think it would be prudent to at least plan to build a meeting room there where those boards could hold their meetings. To that end, when the rework begins in the South Walton Annex, your board may need a place to meet for a period of time, so that would give us that opportunity as well. But you see, the cost of design for that facility is ten thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars, and the cost of construction, one twenty-seven nine forty-six. And then if you'll flip the page, there's an alternative which would add about twenty-three hundred square feet to the boardroom in South Walton Annex, and you can see the costs associated with it there, the design cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and construction of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So those are before you for your consideration today. I would ask that you would take items one through four collectively, unless you have a reason to pull one out. We believe those are the needs as have been expressed. There is some space in there that we would recommend having designed, but perhaps not build out at this time. But we wanted to make sure that particularly the Planning and the Tax Collector's Office have space to expand, and that space would be planned and designed prior to the need to construct it. So our recommendation would be to approve items one through four as they are presented.
Okay. The only question, Stan, I think you've been working on this, so let me clarify something if can, or get some clarification, and alternate number two. It's a pretty significant cost, construction cost there, and I wonder if there's any consideration taken? There's already four walls there. I know we're just taking some metal studs out and drywall to expand that area. I don't understand why the cost is so high in that particular area. Have you got any comment?
Mr. Christopher and I of Lord &amp; Son had that conversation, and his explanation to me was that we would only be adding an additional six hundred square foot to arrive at a total of twenty-three seventy-one. There is the possibilities associated with having to redesign and reconstruct those square footage that already remain, primarily with the AV and the dais configuration. His explanation to me was that it wouldn't be as simple as moving the dais to recenter it in the room, that would have to be redone. Potentially, the HVAC system would have to be reconfigured, and then obviously some of the electrical considerations and tile, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. What's the Board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Is that gonna be items one through four?
Through four.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment?
And I just have a comment. I know we really need extra space in South Walton. We have standing room only at times, and Freeport will be another good opportunity. Sometimes we have strategic meetings or other meetings, and we have to look for a place. So I think these are great ideas.
Okay. Well, we'll address the motion first, items one through four, a motion to approve, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, now we can discuss alternate one and alternate two.
Mr. Chairman, we would suggest you take whatever action you wish to take on those separately, so that we can give you...
Each one of them.
Yes.
Okay. Let's talk about alternate one. It's a Freeport complex, apparently a multi-room, seventeen hundred and twenty-nine square feet. It's a pretty good sized room.
We believe it's sufficient to meet the needs of those boards that we've talked about, and on occasion, this board, but also provide space for whatever other need may arise.
Okay, what's the Board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alternate number two, it's South Walton Annex, renovation of the boardroom.
Motion to approve.
I'll second for discussion. So what we're talking about is just taking in the space between the lobby and where the boardroom is now?
If you're sitting at the dais, there's an office behind the wall immediately to your left, and then there's the vestibule space, and then part of a conference room north and south of that entranceway. So it would be bringing some of that space into the bigger building, moving the dais over to center. We certainly see a need there to grow. We would appreciate the action on the Freeport, and we think the Freeport space is much more critical than this additional space. While this is nice, we would hate to see it impact the ability to get the new space in Freeport.
But we have the money to do this, that's my question.
That was gonna be my question, is the increase in cost, and does this construction cost here also take in any upgrades with the audio system?
It would perhaps be prudent to approve the design of it, and once we have it designed and we begin moving forward with construction, we can certainly determine at that time whether there are sufficient funds or whether we need to take other action to get it into the construction phase. But having it designed would certainly put us on the path to getting there.
Okay. Will you change your motion to reflect that?
I can. I can. I make a motion that we allow it to be designed and then look for further funds in the future.
I'll second that.
Okay. We still had a motion on the floor and a second, so you withdrawing your first motion?
Withdraw my first motion, and then that was my new motion.
You're withdrawing your second? Okay, good. Thank, we got it figured out. All right, is any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we look forward to moving that project along. Next item, yes, and just an item for direction. We have a lot of space in the Freeport Plaza that obviously when you ride by, it looks like it's vacant. We're having a number of inquiries regarding whether we have any interest in leasing additional space. And let me wrap that back around. We have two of the leases that are there currently that expire in the near future. We're working with those two entities, and we would bring you back a recommendation whether we move, extend some leases there, renegotiate leases, or how we handle those two. But for the remaining space, we calculated we'll have about ten thousand roughly square feet available once we complete all of the renovations. But we're getting inquiries today whether we have any interest in leasing those spaces. Our recommendation would be to not lease any of them until we finish this project. We know exactly what's available, and then we can address whether it makes sense and would be prudent to enter to some lease agreements. But before we go down that path, we just want to get the blessing of the Board to know that that's where you'd like to go as well.
Comments?
I think that would be good. Right now, we are not really absolutely sure how much square footage we're going to have left. We may get into the project, and one of the constitutional officers might say, "Well, you know, I changed my mind. I do think I need an office there." So let's get through with the project, and then we'll face this. I would recommend that if we do decide to lease, that all our tenants be on the far end of the building away from the constitutional offices.
Yes, sir.
And planning and the rest of them. I just see that would, that could get kinda hectic with parking and all that, so if we do do it, let's move everybody down.
So you're saying wait until after the project's done, basically? We don't want to do it simultaneously?
Right. And the other thing too is, I'm not sure how these folks would want to have a one-year or five-year or three-year lease, but if we get these leases that go out multiple years, it kinda would hamstring us in a couple years or so.
I can tell you this, when we renegotiated the Port Ministry lease, there were two components to it. One is they had to move, so they moved to the unit number, we leased them unit number two, which was the first most east unit that we own. The unit one is owned separately. But we also put either a sixty or ninety, and I have to go back, ninety-day walkout clause, so we can get out of that lease within ninety days. So I would suggest that what we would negotiate with these current tenants would be something similar to that, that perhaps to relocate them down to that east end and have a provision that in ninety days we can cancel the lease if we found we needed the space. So, yeah, we want to be very careful that we don't put ourselves in an adverse situation in needing space and having space, but having had the lease, we wouldn't have access to it.
Okay. That's just directions.
Clear to understand that.
All right.
Thank you. Next item is regarding the request approved for landfill rate change for commercial customers. You may or may not be aware, but the only Class III and C and D landfill that was accepting commercial waste in Freeport has closed. That leaves our landfill, our county landfill, as the only facility operating to collect that waste. Historically, we have not done a lot of commercial business. We have maintained, we have done some, but we have maintained the presence of that Class III landfill for the convenience and benefit of our citizens, which we don't charge to utilize it. What we have seen since the landfill in Freeport has closed is a double of the volume of this material that's coming to our facility, which in essence has shortened the life of that facility by fifty percent. We were out about four years, and so we were gonna begin to need to do something in the next year or so. But this puts, at the current rate, this puts the life aside at about two years, and it's probably a two-year process to move forward to expand it. So our first request is to increase, we currently charge twenty-one dollars a ton. That was set by our resolution in nineteen ninety-four, and it's not changed since then. Our staff, particularly Billy McKee's, worked very hard to put together some numbers that support a rate of about forty-two dollars a ton of being the average rate in the area. Some are higher, some are a little bit lower, but by and large, forty-two dollars a ton is the goal in commercial rate. So what we're requesting today is that we bring back a resolution to you that would increase that commercial rate from twenty-one dollars a ton to forty-two dollars a ton, keeping in mind that, A, we're gonna see a fairly significant increase in our cost to handle this material, because it's, like I said, we're getting twice as much as we have done. B, it's gonna reduce the life of our site by fifty percent. But C, we don't intend to start charging citizens. We still gonna have that component there, that if, you know, if you got stuff coming from your house, then we're not gonna charge you for it. But we also, when there is anticipation of a commercial site opening in the next few months a year, we don't really want to be in competition with them. We want to use this site for our citizens and for the things that they generate around their home, and not be the disposal site of choice for commercial haulers. So we hope all that together would certainly justify moving this rate from twenty-one dollars a ton to forty-two dollars a ton at this time, and as we move forward, we'll have some other ideas, and you'll see the next item kinda plays right along with this. But our request would be to bring a resolution back to you for you to consider that would change the rate from twenty-one to forty-two dollars a ton for Class III and C and D material.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Seeing none? Any public comment?
We need a motion.
Yeah, if you want to go with that?
Yes.
I so move.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, and along the same line, because we are utilizing that site today, and it is filling up quickly, we would request you to approve that we advertise for a request for qualifications for engineering services for the design permitting and CEI to expand the existing Class III solid waste disposal facility with a new lined cell facility. Current law requires a synthetic lining for all the cells. We anticipate those regulations changing and becoming more strict as we move forward. If we can get this moving forward today and get our permits under today's regulations, we can keep those permits current, and when we decide to build it, we can build it to today's regulations. So, and this is substantial cost when you're talking about building these things, probably at today's regulations, about three hundred thousand dollars an acre to design and build, and it could be up or down a little bit from that. But you have to line it, you have to put a leachate collection system in it, so it's more than just going digging a hole and putting the trash in it. But we believe with your approval of this, we could at least get a head start on the timeframe it's gonna take us to get a new facility built, but at least get us to a position that we know the parameters of which we're gonna have to build it under at the time we choose to.
So move?
Second.
Motion and second.
Do we know how long this new, if we do the renov, well, we're gonna do the renovations, how long will that new sale last us? Twenty years?
Well, it depends on how big we build it, and there's some economies of scale. You're gonna pay some cost whether you build it three acres or you build it twenty acres. So that's part of what we will look at during this process, is to look at what the most prudent size would be to build. But it's gonna be an expensive proposition, but we will certainly have that conversation and that in consideration when we look at what we would bring back for your consideration to build.
Commissioner, the current site is, I believe, sixteen acres, and thus far, it's lasted twenty-four, going on twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
At a much reduced volume. Yeah, like I said, the volume has doubled in the last two or three months, so.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item was the add-on regarding the four-H, and I believe that was handed, the materials handed out to you. We've had this discussion a couple of times at the board level of how we can move forward with assisting four-H on some property they have leased for their use in the vicinity of their office. You see a sheet there of justification of the use of the four-H land. Along with that, you see a layout of what that proposal and the construction there would look like. And finally, you see a cost breakout of labor and material for the four-H project. Four-H has identified about twenty-five hundred dollars in their budget, but they can apply to that, twenty-seven thousand. So it's about a twenty-five thousand dollar proposition for the county. If that's acceptable to the board, we would ask that you approve that contingent upon upon some approvals that are gonna be required from the city of Dufuniac. There are a couple of obstacles there we have to get over in order to be sure we're moving in the right direction with 4H, one being their tree ordinance and what trees can be cleared. They also have an ordinance that certain livestock can't be, um, can't reside within three hundred feet of a, of a residence. So we gotta look at that very clearly as well. But if, if this is where the board would like us to move forward, a motion to do so contingent upon the approvals from the city would be appreciated.
So moved. Contingent upon approval of the city.
Second.
Motion second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries.
And we will work with the 4H folks in the city to the best of our ability to make sure we get all that moving forward at the right pace and direction.
I just wanna comment, this, this is a very worthy project. We're gonna be helping a lot of boys and girls, youngsters, so, um, thank you for, this is my district, so thank you both for voting with me.
You handling Public Works or is it Wilmer? Or Buddy?
We'll take any of them. Next item is regarding Newsome Road. At a previous meeting, I believe, at the last meeting here in Dufuniac, and come on, Buddy, in case you asked us to review a, uh, there was a number of questions and comments presented to the board. We asked Public Works and Legal to review those. I think they found that there was no new information, there's nothing new for you to make a different decision on, but I'll let Buddy share what they did come up with if that be the case.
Yeah, that, that is correct, Larry. And just to give a little background of, the first, we were involved with this goes back to Commissioner Enfield's time on the board. Mr. and Ms. Souders engaged Commissioner Enfield. We give it a thorough investigation, then come up with the same conclusion. When Commissioner Nipper, uh, you know, uh, come on the board, they engage Commissioner Nipper. Again, we give it a thorough investigation. Never have we found that the county has ever conclusively, permanently maintained that road. So basically what we done is looked at the information they provided again, and in your package, there's a letter that Mark Davis had wrote, uh, to the Souders and copied Commissioner Nipper on it, basically laying out the county's position on the road. So, uh, if, if y'all got any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Any question?
So this has never been county maintained?
Not, not that we can, we, we have, uh, Public Works, Legal, Clerk's Office, and we've had some help from admin, and, and we have thoroughly exhausted all the efforts as far as researching that. We have not found that the county has ever accepted this road for maintenance. Now, we have done a number of pater grades on the road. There, and they've made a comment that they, it used to have a green sign, which all the county roads used to have green signs. And, you know, we have a process where, you know, we change them out when they need to be to the blue signs that, that, you know, basically allude to the fact that the county does not maintain the road.
So are the pater grade working effectively?
Uh, well, we've done a number of pater grades on the road. In fact, there's a gentleman that lives, uh, not as far down as the Souders, was in the office last week, so I think we're fixing to do one for them. Um, I mean, a pater grade is an option, some material really, uh, down on the, the Souders end would help if, if they could get a couple of loads of material there. It would be, uh, give us more material to work with and, uh, the road base would probably hold up a little better with some additional material. But we can provide a pater grade without that if that's their choosing.
Okay.
Board's wishes.
I think, I think Mr. and Ms. Souders here, they may want to speak.
Yeah, let me get a motion out here and then we'll do that.
Well, I make a motion, we accept the recommendations of the Public Works Department.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Right here.
Come on up, sir. When you come forward and identify yourself to the clerk.
My name's Gary Souders. This is my wife, Michelle. She's got more information right here. What was just cited about the sign, it's illegal to change any sign without the...
Well, on a private road, that's according to your own land development code. But my main question in all of this is, the deed to Newsome Drive belongs to the county. It has been on record, public record and official records for more than twenty years. Law states it is, belongs to the county.
That's Florida law nine five point two three one.
And, now you made me lose my thought. So my question is, does the county own this road or not? Or is this a record that was filed and is fault and a felony committed or what?
Well, the only thing I can figure is that, that there's a lot of roads in this county that may have that deed restriction on it, open to the public. If the county has not formally accepted that road for maintenance, then it wouldn't be something we would be doing.
Okay. Then why, since this road is not owned by the county, why does it escape taxation? It cannot escape taxation unless the county owns the road bed.
Florida law one nine three dot zero eight five.
Legal, you got anything you wanna say?
Not at this time. I'm happy to look at, look at these sections, but not right at the moment.
Okay. If you wanna present those statutes that you reference here to the legal, they will research it out and we'll take a look at it.
We already did.
Well, you did.
Three times.
She didn't. She's our legal counsel. She's the one that's gonna do the research to see if it even comports to what you're saying.
Okay, and the point being, that if the county owns the road as a public road, as stated on public record?
We'll see what the deeds say and the public records say concerning the right of way through there.
And I can give her the record number for the deed.
That's fine. If you, whatever you wanna supply to her, uh, that'd be fine. Just, uh, hand it off to the bailiff there.
Okay, thank you.
If you want, you wanna give that to, or you wanna, how, how you wanna do that? You gonna rewrite it and give it to her or what do you wanna do?
Do you have it right here?
Um, yes, I have.
You have a book and page, I can just take a note of it.
Okay.
Bring it, can we bring it over?
It's, uh, it's booked seventeen fifteen, page one ninety-four.
Okay. Thank you. I've got it.
Okay, and will this be brought before another meeting or?
As soon as she has the opportunity to research it out, it'll be scheduled at another meeting for any, it's, well, let me take that second. Go ahead.
I, I'll look at this information and see if it does anything to change the analysis. It may have been already taken into consideration when we looked at it before. I'm just not prepared to answer that right at this moment.
If it has, if there's any change from what she looks at to what action's been taken, then it'd be brought back up. But as of right now, the motion on the floor is to accept the Public Works recommendation to not maintain it.
Okay. But I do want an answer to that question, does the county own this deed or not?
Well, I can't answer that for you right now.
Okay, but that's what I want.
That's what you...
This is the, this will be the fourth time we come up here about this road and we've cited the law, laws, three times already.
Have you got an attorney?
No.
Excuse me?
Have you got an attorney?
No.
No.
Okay.
I was hoping, I don't need one.
All right. Well, we're gonna...
Do we need one?
I don't know if you do or not. It's up to you of how you wanna play this. She's a...
Be good right now.
Well, you presented stuff, we'll look at it and you may agree, you may not agree. So we'll just see how it works out. Let Legal have their opportunity.
Three felonies.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
There's three felonies involved here.
Well, we, that's your allegation. There's no proof that that happened other than your statement. Let them do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Posed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is regarding the proposed park at Bay Grove Road and, and I'm gonna take out the word proposed and just talk about the park at Bay Grove Road and US Highway three thirty-one and the update on two public workshops held at the Freeport City Hall, changes made to the preliminary park concept. As you're aware, the board staff held two public workshops in conjunction with the park. A lot of input was there. There are documents in your board packet from those two meetings. Some minor changes made to the layout of the park that are reflected in the, again, in the documents that are before you. So our request today is multifold and you have in your summary page of the document, letters A through F, uh, that we were asking for consideration. We're actually gonna remove items D and E and we'll discuss those separately. But what we are requesting from the board today is to approve, approve for staff to move forward with land use change for the park property from rural village to public facilities. Approval for staff to move forward with design and permitting necessary for the park improvements based on the current bar, park conceptual plan. Approve for staff to submit a development order to the county for the proposed park improvements. And skipping D and E, approve for staff to post signage of the upcoming park improvements at the park property. And there is a rendering of the sign, I believe it's the last page of the documents submitted to you. So that's what we are asking your approval for today regarding items D and E. Recent meetings with DEP have shed some light on some, uh, probably good news where there are some things that we thought we would probably have to get permits for, we can move forward without additional permits. So that will change perhaps some of the phasing and, um, uh, the permitting. So we would like to bring those two back at, at a later meeting, but your approvals of A, B, C, and F would allow us to continue moving forward with the process. So I believe staff is here if you have any questions on any of those items.
Okay. Uh, I'm pass the gavel to the vice chair and make a, a motion to, uh, accept staff's request for A, B, C, and F. And then I'm primarily doing this if we can get a second, if there's any discussion. I've had, maybe we can take it from... Okay, we got them.
Any, any discussion among the board?
Well, the only thing, I'd just let the board know, I, I did meet, uh, with staff on this, Public Works, Buddy and them, and Greg Graham, the engineer, and, um, we did find out some things that surprised us as far as, and I, there is no picture of it up there, but anyway, uh, has to do with some dredging and all that. And, um, because of that meeting that they had last week with DEP and the Corps, it just, um, they found out some things that it's best if we could just address these of four items we talked about in my motion and then that, give them the opportunity to continue beating with DEP and Corps and work, uh, all of the other little nuances out before we make the decision on the other part of it. So that's my motion.
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? How's the board feel?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will pass the gavel back to the chair.
Good job.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners. Another project that we're looking forward to, um, moving, seeing move forward and again, impressed every time I drive by there, the beauty of that place.
It is really pretty.
It's very nice. I've had, I've had so many calls. How good it looks.
Next item is an updating request for direction on RFQ zero one eight dash zero one two for engineering services for the County Road two eighty-eight connector roads. Responses for the RFQ for the engineering services are, will close on March first, two thousand eighteen. Primarily, the staff is looking for direction regarding the review of those, um, submittals. We've done it a couple of ways in the past and this may lead to a bigger discussion how we want to move forward. So the question being today, do you want staff to, uh, review those, uh, bring it down to one recommendation for the board? Bring it back three recommendation, three recommendations to the board without ranking them and allowing you to do the final assessment of those three? Or bring them all back to the board for your, um, consideration? We have done all of the above. Staff is prepared to do any of the above, uh, as the board sees fit.
Uh, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many engineers we have on this board?
Several, on the board?
Yeah. I, I, I make a recommendation that we allow our engineering staff to do this. We're, we're at, you know, we're asking to evaluate engineers and none of us are engineers. So that would be my recommendation.
So that, that would, your recommendation would be to allow staff to review them and bring back their top-rated candidate for the board to approve and move forward?
Yes.
Of top-rated firm, not candidate.
You gonna put that in the form of a motion?
It's in a motion, yes.
In a motion.
Second.
Second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries.
Next item is regarding the, um, same request on the construction services of County Road six oh five and one eighty-three B resurfacing. These are scrap projects. The County Road one eighty-five Gum Creek Church resurfacing Scott project and the County Road eight eighty-three resurfacing, which is a SIGP grant project, um, contingent upon receiving notice of proceed from the State of Florida DOT. You know, absent different direction, staff will bring back the top three, uh, engineering firms for design CEI services without ranking in order to allow the board to rank and select the top firm unless otherwise directed. Again, very similar request as the last, uh, so whatever direction the board wishes to take, we would...
Same motion.
Second.
Same motion as the one before.
Yep.
Bring back the top rank. Okay. We got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries.
So having, having taken that action on the last two, on the last two items, uh, consistent with one another, is it the board's wishes that until further, uh, notice that this would be the process to move forward with, uh, when we, when we have to rank firms based on qualifications? Or would you like to have a further discussion about it? Or would you like us to continue bringing them back individually to make that determination?
Uh, you know, as far as engineering decisions, uh, I think it would be prudent for us to have our engineering staff handle those, uh, but in other things that, you know, where, you know, we may be more qualified to, to handle them, I would, so I would still think we probably need to bring them back.
Okay. Um, let's have a, we'll have a conversation with staff on how we would best approach that. We may bring you back, um, some language that we'd ask you to approve so that, you know, we're, we all know where we're going and what we're trying to do with this. But we'll work on that. Next item is a request to approve Rock Hill Road Phase One, which is six point nine five miles from US three thirty-one to Walton Bridge Road for funding consideration through the small county outreach program. As you are aware, each year, we have opportunities to apply for different pots of funds, uh, one of them being the Scott program. And with your approval, this would be a road that we would ask for the FDOT to consider funding in the two thousand and one, two thousand twenty-one, uh, schedule, um, for the two thousand nineteen through twenty-three work program. This would be submitted to them subject to their approval and we'd bring all that back to you at the appropriate time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries.
Next item is a similar request regarding County Road one eighty-one East, uh, Phase One, which is four point zero eight miles, uh, from State Road eighty-three to Oak Grove Road for funding consideration through the small county road assistance program. This is the scrap program that you've heard of, uh, very similar process as to the one you just approved where we would ask for the state to consider funding these through the scrap program in future years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries.
Next item is, uh, for your consideration is request to award, uh, and begin negotiations with the top-ranked company Walter Marine for RFP zero one eight dash zero one zero for the Walton County Topseal Hill nearshore artificial reef construction. Uh, that's from Public Works and Linda Gates. On November the twentieth, we received the original executed copy of the grant agreement for the construction of the forty prefab modules for the Topseal Hill nearshore artificial reef. And so we're now ready to negotiate with the highest-ranked firm, Walter Marine, for deployment of those reefs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Koi Bowman, B O W M A N. I'm against this artificial reef idea because of the fact that it's... I'm against this artificial reef idea because of the fact that it's purely a tourist entertainment thing. I think the reason that the turtles do so well here is because there are no reefs offshore. Reefs attract predatory animals, fish that eat fish and other wildlife, and also reefs attract sharks, which is the last thing we need around here. But I think one of the reasons that the turtles come to the panhandle is because there is no reef for predatory animals to live in and eat the little baby turtles as they swim back out to sea. I also am aware of the fact that there's no bedrock under Florida, so when you put any kind of mass out in the sandy ocean floor after the next hurricane, it's just going to sink down into the sea. I called Fish and Wildlife and got some numbers, and that the majority of these offshore reefs have been put in since 2016, which is only a couple of years ago. We have not had a major hurricane since the majority of these reefs have gone in. And I know there are some that are already put in, and what I would like to see is that no more go in until after we have our next major hurricane, not a simple hurricane, but a major hurricane, so that we can see how the ones that are currently in the water act after the seafloor is stirred up. Because I can pretty much guess that they're going to be buried 20, 30 feet underneath the sand. So it's kind of pointless to put them out there when they're just going to sink into the earth. So that's that, thanks.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tuss, I believe you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The first item, I've asked TDC Marketing Director Mike Kerrigan to address the board on that item, and then I'll be back up for an update and to address the Driftwood Road property. Good morning, commissioners. Mike Kerrigan, K-E-R-R-I-G-A-N, Director of Marketing with the TDC. As the agenda states, I'm here to request the approval from you guys to allow us to commit $75,000 to a joint marketing effort with American Airlines to promote new air service to Northwest Florida Beaches International Airport from Dallas and Charlotte. To give a little background on this, ECP announced these flights to begin in June. The announcement was made a couple months ago, and they approached us about some marketing support to promote these new flights and promote South Walton as a vacation destination accessible through ECP in these two new destinations. To give a little historical perspective, this is not new to us. In 2015, we participated successfully in a very similar program with United Airlines with the same dollar amount, and several years prior with Southwest in a larger campaign at that time. There is money in this year's budget to do it. We thought it would be prudent to bring this before you since it was not a part of the media plan presented and approved back in June. We had internal discussions on this. We felt that it was a worthwhile project for us to take on. We brought it before both the Marketing Committee and the Tourist Development Council, where it was met with unanimous approval at both. And so we're bringing it before you today for your approval. If we receive that, we'll be ready to execute a plan and move forward.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. The next item is an update, a request for direction on the Driftwood Road property. This is the property that is just about 3, 350 feet north of Pompano Joe's, our Miramar Beach access. And we had gotten, I guess, a few meetings back, approval to do appraisals on that property, and also a land use report. So I wanted to give you an update that we have the appraisals back, and the appraisals came in, and they are less than the asking price. And at this point, that, that is all I'd like to disclose publicly, so I can negotiate with the owners of that property on a price, and then bring that back to the board for consideration at perhaps the next meeting. And then also, just a quick update on the land use report, that is not quite done yet. I was told by planning earlier in the week yesterday that that should be ready for the next meeting. So what I'd like to propose to the board for consideration is to negotiate with the owner, bring back that negotiated price, if there is one, to the next meeting, and also have that land use report.
Board wishes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you. And then just a quick update. The last meeting, I announced that we were having a meeting with our bed tax collectors to discuss VRBO and the impact that that is having on our local bed tax collectors. And we had a meeting last Wednesday at the Annex, and we had a great turnout. We had 100 bed tax collectors there, and we had a great conversation with those folks. And so now we're in the process of putting some plans together on how we might be able to help them. So I'll keep you updated as we move forward the process, but just kind of wanted to give you an update that we did have a very good meeting.
All right.
Any questions for me?
Any question? Thank you, Jay.
Great, thank you.
All right, Ms. Heather, I think you're up.
Okay. Commissioners, the only item that I have on the agenda is discussion of the Brandon Oaks interlocal with the city of Freeport. As y'all know, this discussion took place, it kind of predated my time with the county, so I might not fully appreciate the extent of the discussions that the Board of County Commissioners had and the, and the back and forth that went on with the city of Freeport. In any event, what we have is an interlocal agreement that was approved by Freeport. There was some modifications made to that agreement from the last iteration that I believe Sid sent over to Freeport. And the major change is in the agenda under Paragraph 5 of the interlocal. And I had some concerns about that. My understanding is the county is concerned about the timeline of when this project is concluded. So when I saw the changes to Paragraph 5, it, it would appear that it limits the county's ability to grant or deny, deny a request for extension under appropriate circumstances. With that, I'll, I'll let y'all ask any questions that you have of me.
If I may just add to that, I did have a conversation with Clay Adkison, Council for the city of Freeport last week, and he assured me that we would meet in the very near future with our council to come up with some acceptable language. We're anticipating that meeting in the next week perhaps, so hopefully we can come to a better conclusion of what is acceptable to the city of Freeport.
And I, I think that we just need to direct legal to meet with city of Freeport attorney and come up with acceptable language?
Well, I think Ms. Heather's had multiple conversations, Clay, don't let me put words in your mouth, but the language that you just, that's in the book here, that's the most recent, and that's the position the city is taking. And the thing I have, I have an issue with is, in the agreement, they use the term often impractical. What in the world does that mean in regards to putting in that sewer line? Is it a position they could take that, you know, it's impractical for us to do it at this time because we run out of dollar bills or something? And it just keeps getting delayed and delayed. I've been talking about this thing for over a year and a half, and thought we had this thing nailed down, and now all of a sudden, somebody has convinced someone to change the language in here. What is wrong with, if it's beyond their control or our control, whether it's somebody files a lawsuit for not wanting to tie on, a hurricane comes through here, a tornado goes through the middle of it, contractor falls and goes away? Those are issues or things that happen outside our control, and we can all agree, we can make some concessions. I just, I just don't understand.
But for the, for the, for your information, on February 5th, I had, I had sent a communication to the city attorney and suggested, it's essentially just that, I suggested that it may be more palatable for the BCC if there was language to the effect that if, if the city needs to ask for an extension, the county will look at it and will not unreasonably withhold approval. That was my suggestion, I thought that might be something that, that would be all right with y'all. On the 13th of February, I received communication back that states that this issue was discussed with the city council at the meeting, and they remain comfortable with the version of the document I sent to you. At this point, the city will await the BCC's formal action to accept or reject that document as the city council has approved it and stands ready to implement it. That's, that's where we're at.
All we asking, as a franchise holder, to go out there and address them 14 that have already failed and get the rest of them done within a reasonable amount of time. And I know some of their comments, well, the county ain't got no money in this, they ain't got any skin in the game. Freeport's having to put it all up to do this, except for the developer's fee that we gave to them, 140-something thousand dollars to get this thing started. Maybe I'm looking at it wrong. It's their franchise area. They asked for it, they got it back almost 30 years ago. All we're asking to do is, is address the issues out there and take care of it. But to use some legalese, gobbledygook if you will, concerning impractical, that's subjective to whoever's looking at it, in my opinion. They may want it, it's impractical for us to do it. I just make, if the language could be simple, if it's beyond the city's control or the county's control, there'd be no unreasonable delay in giving, granting an extension if need be.
Well, and, and just to be, to be clear, I've heard nothing that would suggest that the city is not, does not have every intention to do just that and connect. That's, there's not been any communication that I've heard that would indicate otherwise. But the language is, is a bit nebulous and problematic, in my opinion.
Mr. Jones, were you, you said you was going to meet with...
That was my conversation with Mr. Adkison just last week, yes.
Well, let's, if, if the board doesn't have any objections, allow staff and attorney to get back with Mr. Adkison and see if we can get this language cleared up, bring it back.
That's, that's the objective, yes.
All right, you need a motion or not, or direction?
I think, I think we're, I've got your marching orders.
Okay, very well. Is that all you have, Ms. Heather?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
All right. Okay, Ms. Commander is not here.
I have her items.
You have her?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead.
She asked that, she is out today with some medical procedures, but she asked me to move forward. The first is to request the acceptance of resignation of Trey Nick from the local Restore Act Committee, filling the fishing industry position and appoint Buddy Gentry to fill that vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Just a quick question. Is Buddy Gentry by any chance related to Randy Gentry, the...
Could not tell.
The head of the Department of Energy at the White House?
Don't know.
Okay. I'll look it up, thanks.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item, Commissioner Commander asks for the board's consideration is some distribution from her recreational plat fee funds for District 4, and that distribution would include $5,000 to the Fenix Springs Little League, $2,500 to Driftwood Park, $2,000 to Legion Park, and $500 to the Liberty Community Center for Playground Equipment.
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Oh, she had that much money in her rec plat fee?
She sneaky.
She must be.
And, and she gave me 500. If I had another 500, I could put a piece of pla, uh, put a piece of playground equipment at the Liberty Community Center. If I have anybody that would be willing to give...
Let's get this one through and then get my... We'll, we'll get to that.
All right. Just, just...
So that's...
I went it out there.
That's fine.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'm counting, that's $9,000?
Mm.
Two point, oh, $10,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Do I need to restate my request?
Yes, please.
My request would be that someone else would give me 500 or 250 each, so that I could put a piece of playground equipment at the Liberty Community Center for those well-deserving children out there.
I'd like to know where you're getting it for $500, because...
We, we found a piece for a thousand that we can do, 500 from Sarah, and hopefully I will have some more.
Are you begging? I'm, I'm willing to give 250 of my rec plat fee.
As will I.
Thank you.
So, somebody make that in the form of a motion.
I, I make that motion that Commissioner Chapman gives me 250, and Commissioner Anderson gives me 250 for the Liberty Community Center children.
And I second.
Second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, Ms. Jones, you have anything?
Uh, just, I don't want to put Stan on the spot, but in light of the, you know, the killings and the things that we've had in the schools, I, I just, I think we're in a place that we really do need to move forward with assessing all of our facilities to make sure that they're perfectly safe for any individual that might want to come in and harm our staff. So could you just kind of give us an update of where we are and...
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with Tom Ring, Major Tom Ring, with the Sheriff's Office last week to get an update of that assessment that's, that's currently taking place. They are partially done with it. They are waiting on some additional information. I spoke with Rick Wilson yesterday, and we're going to meet with them this week and give them some more information, so hopefully we'll have something to bring back to you in the very near future.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioners, under mine, I have an item to discuss the Choctawatch Bay Estuary Coalition. Y'all may remember several months ago when this coalition was put together, y'all seemed fit to put me on that board. And it's, the board is made up of representatives from Holmes, Washington, Oaklusa, and Walton County. I'm the vice chair of that particular coalition. We meet about every couple of months. Is Jim here? Yes, okay. Jim Tuffalo is also, he's the guy that we, the only staff member I think we have at this point in time. And, sir?
I'm a chief staff member.
Yeah.
I work for free.
That's right. But anyway, Kelly Wines in Oaklusa County has been nice enough to let Jim try to get in here and get this thing going. In your particular book, in your book, agenda book, there's a letter that's from, signed by the chair of that group, coalition, Kelly Wines, Oaklusa Commissioner, asking for funds. Jim, I'll let you pick it up and just identify your name.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Jim Tuffilio. I'm the Coastal Management Coordinator for the Oaklusa County Tourist Development Department. I'll give you an idea of how important I think this topic is. I actually stood up two of my own commissioners this morning at meetings, so hopefully I still have a job when I get back home. Thankfully, those two commissioners, and in fact, all of our commissioners are fervent supporters of the idea of an estuary program. As the chairman stated, there is an existing coalition formed under Florida Statute 163. It's a cooperative agreement between the four counties that the chairman mentioned. We also have a representative on the Board of Directors, ex officio from Eglin Air Force Base, also the director of the Choctawatch Basin Alliance. And just recently, Ms. Barbara Gibson, who is the director of, get this title right, the Choctawatch P. Yellow River Watershed Management Authority up in Alabama. So now we're not only a multi-county organization, we're also a multi-state organization. Why should you care about an estuary program? Because I know you care about the economy. You know that, as well as I do, that our, our local economy is based heavily on tourism, also the military, but heavily on tourism. Without quality of place, without good water quality, you don't have the economy we have today. So an estuary program, and I'll give you a real short example, and I won't waste a lot of your time this morning, and saying that, I'll be happy to meet with you individually if you'd like in the future. Tampa Bay National Estuary Program. 28 national estuary programs were established in the early 90s. Tampa Bay is the poster child for the estuary programs. When they started in the 90s, they looked at their seagrass coverage in Tampa Bay. Now, seagrass is kind of like the canary in the coal mine. If you've got good seagrass coverage, then your water quality is good. If your water quality is good, your fishing is good. If your fishing is good, your economy is good, your tourism is good. It, it rolls on and on to affect all kinds of things within the economy. So they went back and they looked at how much coverage did they have from aerial photos back in the, in pre-development, in the 1950s? And they said, our goal is going to be in a non-regulatory environment. The estuary programs do not tell you what you... Estuary programs do not tell you what you can do with your property or anything else. They don't create laws. It's a cooperative program. They said, we're going to bring back the amount of seagrass coverage we had in Tampa Bay in nineteen fifties. Well, they met that goal and exceeded it five years before they said they were going to do it. They did it because the community saw it as valuable. They did it because the business community saw it as valuable and good for business. And it has gone on and been incredibly successful in all of its endeavors, as have all the other national estuary programs. They're still in, in effect today. So you get basically a lot of bang for your buck. Tampa Bay, they leverage every dollar they get to seventeen other dollars. I mean, that's a pretty good business model. So, you know, our, our program is in its infancy. We're moving ahead, and the letter that you have before you is a request that you commit ten percent of your pot one restore dollars towards the estuary program. Since that letter was written, Okaloosa County has done that. They've committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from pot one towards the estuary program. On top of that, Okaloosa County has also made a request to the Gulf Consortium for another two million dollars. So, it's important, certainly to my Commissioners, it's important to the community because if you look at the written official informal support that we've gotten, it goes from Eglin Air Force Base, Holbert Field, the Okaloosa Walton Building Association, all the municipalities within Okaloosa County, all of the chambers of commerce in Okaloosa County. There is a, a common absolute support for this program throughout all levels of business and nonprofits and you name it. And I think the biggest part of that is because it's not regulatory. What your Restore Act dollars would do would be to establish this program, to give it seed money, basically, so that once those restored dollars are exhausted, this program will continue on its own, self-sufficient, through grants, through public support, through business support, and it will become a legacy program for you. I think all of you understand, and I, and I'm sure you do, that you look at some of the Restore Act projects that got funded, and you ask yourself, how does this help our economy? How does this respond to an oil spill? This does. This is a legacy program. It'll go on, hopefully, if we do this right, well beyond, you know, your terms here and well beyond probably your children's lifetimes. These are incredible programs, and I can't urge you enough to consider this, and consider the request from the coalition to commit, in the bigger picture, not a whole lot of money towards something that can give you so much benefit. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Have any questions for Jim?
Yeah, this is a regional project, which I'm in favor of, but have you, is this a project that's been approved by Restore, or are you gonna have to submit to Restore?
This, for, for pot one funds, we are actually in the process of amending our multi-year plan. We've had discussions with John Stutz from the Treasury Department, and we can do this. We can utilize pot one monies for this. Now, just so you know, also, we had your Commission and our Commission directed joint staff to go after an EPA grant that was coming from pot two funds, from the council funds. We were unsuccessful in that, Pensacola got it, but we believe fervently that, and we've been given indication that this is accurate, that there will be additional funds in the future from EPA. And, and the, the benefit you get is having one of these plans in place that's been approved by EPA is that grant funds and all kinds of other funds are gonna come to those types of programs before they're gonna come to a county or a municipality.
Does anyone know what amount of money we would be obligating or committing to?
Our pot one funds are thirty-eight million over, I think that number's about right.
Melinda, do you know?
Does that sound right?
Ten percent would be approximately two hundred and six thousand dollars a year for the next fifteen years.
Okay. And I will remind the board that, you know, you have empowered a, a committee to make recommendations back to the board. So, we'll take whatever direction the board gives, but we may need to kinda massage that process to be sure we get there in the appropriate way, if, if it's something the board wishes to do.
Well, that was something I was gonna mention, that we need to go back, I think, to a Restore Committee and at least.
Right, right. I certainly support the committee, and I really appreciate the regional approach you're taking. In light of, you know, all, I'm on the Triumph side, so we, and the Commissioner that does Restore is not here, so if we, I would like to move it back to that Restore Committee and get a recommendation from them and, and then move forward from that.
All right.
Okay.
We can handle that.
Anything else, Jim?
As I said, I'm available anytime. Commissioner, you can reach out to me, and I'll be happy to meet with you individually, and I know Melinda will as well.
Well, I appreciate your effort. I grew up on that bay, and it's a resource that neither county is really fully utilizing, and a lot of it is because we do need to clean it up. But, I mean, I fished and oystered and threw cast nets and everything else when I was a kid growing up there, and, and it was a different world back then. And the bay was a lot cleaner back then. So, so I applaud your efforts, and I certainly support anything we can do to help you all.
Well, I'm, again, glad to see the lady from Alabama. She came to one of our meetings, if you remember, without assistance from Alabama, with the P. River Choctawatchy and all them that come into the Choctawatchy and subsequently into the bay, without them getting on board and helping to try and minimize the impact along the river, we, as I said at that meeting, we ain't gonna get nowhere. We have to have their assistance.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, thanks for coming over, Jim, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments on what I was talking about? Oh, is that Mr. Boudreau? Yes, it is. He's hiding back there, I didn't get to see you.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
That's all right.
Sure. So Daryl Boudreau with the Nature Conservancy, forty-two fifty-five Sarsapras Avenue, Milton, Florida. So I think Jim did a just fantastic job advocating for this, and so I don't wanna repeat all that. I just wanted to highlight the fact that this program, that, that, at the essence, what it will do is identify the most important problems, and then what projects will fix them. And then because you have a partnership with federal, state, and local governments, universities, and, and the community, and businesses all at the table during that process, the chances of it getting funding from that one point six over billion in pot two go way up. And in the meeting that Jim referenced with EPA, they made it a very strong point that their budget was increased this fiscal year by four million, and it's proposed eight million increase next fiscal year. And they are planning on using that money to fund the projects that come out of estuary program processes, just because they're based in science. And when you fund a project identified through that process, it's gonna have a, it's gonna have bang for the buck for the community. So I just wanted to throw in our support as well. Very much appreciate you bringing this up today, and then anything that I can do to assist, please let me know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Melinda, do you have any comments you wanna make? No? All right, thank you. All right, I slipped over you, Mr. Anderson. You got anything you wanna bring up?
Nope.
Okay. Citizen's request has been pulled. This is time for public comment. Anybody wants to talk about anything, come forward. Anybody? Ms. Bowman?
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. I'd like to talk about the three-minute public comment section. Okay, let's establish this. If you are indeed elected Representatives, then that means that your job, it makes you a public servant. Your job is to serve the public. And the whole purpose of these meetings is to hear what the public wants you to do. What happened last time was disgraceful. You are not allowed to speak through my three minutes and then claim that you gave me three minutes to talk. You are not legally allowed to turn off my microphone so that the public cannot hear what I have to say. That is censorship. That is what Communist China does to prevent the public from hearing things. You do not get to decide what the public hears. And then the fact that you threaten me with physical violence because you don't like what I have to say is truly fascism. So I'm, I'm ashamed at the way that you have behaved and the way that you have treated the public for the past thirty, forty, fifty years, that you use violence, censorship, and just general abuse of the public. I'm, I'm, I'm just really ashamed of your treatment of me, and it's highly illegal. In this country, we have freedom of speech, expression, religion, and press. Censorship, that's under press. Freedom of speech is what I'm doing right now, and, and, and although I have no intention of cursing, I have edited myself and, and held back. Every now and then I do curse. It's not illegal because of freedom of speech. I, I don't intend to curse, and if you don't want cursed words on your website, then you can just get the property appraiser to go on there and change all my cursed words to no A-G-A-C. There's just so much to say. I'm not gonna be able to say it all today, so. Well, since we're on the topic of grass, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to say a quote from a woman named Marjorie Stoneman. She wrote a book called River of Grass. She's nearly solely responsible for saving the Everglades. She passed away about ten years ago. She said, "Florida is a test, and if we pass it, then we get to keep the earth." She also said, "It is extremely dangerous to have people in control of Florida who do not understand the nature of Florida." Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bowman. Anyone else? Seeing none. We can go into Mac, I guess you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items tonight, one of which is a continuance, which leaves us with one legislative and one quasi-judicial item. How would you like to proceed?
Okay, let's let everybody clear out. Hang on just a minute, Mac. Mac, let's take this out of order. Mr. Pennington, you have something you wanna bring to the board? We were about to get into the latest, latest part of it, so come on forward. Mac, just give him a minute.
Thank you. William Pennington, Clerk's Office. In the absence of a quorum, are there any mechanisms in place that would authorize the Clerk's Office to disperse county funds for waste management? It's, it's a fairly large invoice, and to wait till the next board meeting.
I can speak to that. Since you brought it up again, I did, I did have an opportunity to look at the statutes, and it is okay, as long as there is a quorum, even if two, as long as a majority of the folks that are, the quorum that is present vote affirmatively, then even if one has to abstain, it's okay.
Okay, so should we bring that back up for a vote?
My, my understanding is you're, is that's just exactly what you're requesting. I don't think that's problematically procedurally. If you tabled it, I don't think there's any problem re-taking that up at the same meeting.
Okay, we, we tabled it to the other thing, so I would think we need to move the table.
Yeah, I think a, a motion to reopen that item for consideration right now and a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, which one are we doing? Doing away with the table?
We're removing the table.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
And I have to abstain, so all in favor?
Aye. So we can pay.
You can pay him.
You get paid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my apologies, Commissioners, I, I, since he said it was okay to wait, that's why I didn't bring it up this meeting, so.
I'm sure Caleb's looking for some money. You get it, okay. Mac, we'll start over with you, sir.
Yes, sir. We have one legislative item and two quasi-judicial items. One of the quasi-judicial items is a request to continue. Would you like to address that request first?
Please, let's get that one.
And this would be for item number three on our planning agenda, the Eden's Landing replat, two. The applicant is requesting to continue that item to March thirteenth, twenty eighteen, at the South Walton Annexit, on or after five P.M.
Okay, have we ever continued this before?
Uh, I think we have, and I think we possibly have a new owner who may change his mind about what he wants.
Okay. All right. Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Commissioner, continue.
Second.
A motion, a second. Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us back to item number one. It's a legislative item. This is a request to approve by ordinance an amendment to Walton County Land Development Code, Chapter Seven, to add language that would allow eligible applicants to participate in the Florida Department of Transportation tourist-oriented development or directional sign program. This would allow certain directional signs on state right-of-ways outside of the three designated scenic quarters in Walton County. We had a first reading of this item on February thirteenth, and this is the adoption hearing.
Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next item is a quasi-judicial item.
All right, anybody that's gonna be offering any testimony on these quasi-judicial items, if you please rise, raise your right hand so you can be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, as you approach the podium, when you cut up to the microphone, if you please state your name and spell your last name for the record. And as far as the Commission is concerned, have, has anybody on the Commission had any discussions that would prevent you from making a fair and impartial decision on any of these items?
No.
And no expertise either, or other?
Okay, Mac?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. This is the Church Street Landing Plat. This is a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Bob Barante. This plat application previously received development order approval. And this is a request to reduce the previous approval from twenty-four lots down to seventeen lots. It still meets traffic and currency, and all fees, except for the recording fee at the Clerk's Office, have been, have already been paid. Have any further questions? We'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mac? Seeing none, okay. Is the applicant here? Come forward, please.
Good morning. My name is Daryl Burgess, B-U-R-G-I-S. I am a land surveyor with Emerald Coast Associates. We prepared the record plat. The infrastructure is complete and has been certified, and my client has just informed me that those two recording fees and the recreational impact fee checks have been written and furnished to the project manager and Planning and Development Services. So, other, if you have any technical questions or something I might answer concerning the plat?
Any questions? Seeing none, okay. Any public comment? Ms. Bowman?
When I look up the deed to this, it says that in two thousand and five, this was turned over as a conservation easement. So how is it now that somebody wants to build a bunch of homes on a conservation easement?
You'll have, is it, hang on, is that all you have to ask about that?
Well, other than the fact that, that it doesn't, that there's nothing legitimate about the deedery, it starts with a fake document. I wanna know about the two thousand and five conservation easement from volcano development to the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which is really confusing because then it says that one year later Church Street sold it for two million dollars. So I, I don't understand how a piece of property can be a conservation easement, and then somebody who has no evidence of owning that property before can sell it for two million dollars.
We're in the comment section for the public, and that's your questions, and Mr. Burgess will have time for rebuttal here in just a second. I want to make sure there's nobody else who wants to speak to that. Anybody else? Seeing none? Okay, the public comment is closed. Mr. Burgess, you're in rebuttal.
It is true, uh, members of the Commission, that a conservation easement is recorded, but only on a portion of this property that is properly reflected on the proposed subdivision plat. It put, uh, the majority, if not all, of the wetlands into conservation in the whole permitting process. Uh, as far as the ownership and ability to file the plat, that has all been certified by a private attorney and appears on the cover page of the plat.
Okay, thank you. Mac, uh, Ms. Bowman, please take a seat, please. Miss, thank you. Uh, Mac, you got anything else you want to add concerning?
No, sir. The ownership and the conservation easement are all in proper order for the approval of this plat.
Okay, thank you. All right, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, motion carries.
Thanks, sir. That's all we have.
That's all you got? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.